I'd like to call the order the January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, regular meeting of the Buckeye Local Schools Board of Education. Roll call please.
Sisalich?
Here.
Manson?
Yes.
Ptech?
Here.
Stoll?
Here.
Barco?
Here. Would you like to join us in pledging allegiance? The flag is left above you, behind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
This is a meeting, agenda statement. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And item five, approval of minutes. Resolved that the Buckeye Board of Education approved the minutes of the regular meeting of December ninth, two thousand and fourteen. Entertained a motion?
Motion, please.
A second. Sisalich and Mr. Manson. And roll call please.
Sisalich?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Ptech?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes. Recommendation statement. Following our recommendations that have been identified for approval as part of the consent agenda for this meeting, if the board member wishes to remove any items from this agenda for further discussion prior to taking action, please let either the superintendent, board, or president know. Number seven, approval of consent agenda. Resolved that the Buckeye Board of Education approved the consent agenda of January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as presented. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ptech, Mr. Stoll. Any discussion on it? Do you have anything? Okay. Roll call please.
Ptech?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Sisalich?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes. Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Thank you and welcome this evening. I'm really happy to have you all here tonight. Our first item tonight is something that I think we all very much enjoy, our Students of the Month. If I could please ask our principals along with the Students of the Month to please gather over along my left, your right, on this side, and we'll ask you to come up one at a time and have our principals introduce their Students of the Month.
Buckeye Junior High probably will present the honor to Sam Zimer. He's a member of Team Two, the Brady Bunch. They said they had no problem picking him out. He stands out because he's really friendly and helps others all the time. He is an excellent student. I don't want to miss anything here. He's an academic challenge, cross-country band. He plays the piano, right Sam? Sam wasn't anymore talking to me either. He's in 4H at Valley City, and he's active in his church. So I'd like to congratulate Sam Zimer, Buckeye Junior High's Student of the Month.
I'm very pleased to present Corinne Hannah for the Buckeye Primary School. Corinne reflects the Buckeye basics perfectly. She's always respectful, responsible, and tries to be a problem solver. She's a role model for all Buckeye students. She's helpful, especially with our younger or new students. Corinne strives to do her best, being a good listener, always prepared, and following directions. Along with completing all of her assigned homework, she submitted entries to help Baldwin with this problem on bullying each month. Did I read it on announcements? No, need to move on. I'm very proud to have such a student representing Buckeye Primary School. Congratulations.
Our Student of the Month from Buckeye Intermediate Schools, Olivia Curlo. Olivia is a sixth grader in Mrs. Johnson's class. Olivia is well-deserving of being named Student of the Month. Olivia is a very caring person who always puts others first. She always has a positive attitude and is encouraging to those around her. Olivia is a great student who takes pride in her work. This past grading period, she made the principal's list. When Olivia is not at school, she's actively involved in Cannon Irish Dance. She dances year-round, performing at many nursing homes and festivals. Olivia Curlo.
I am very honored and pleased tonight to have with me Ms. Angela Crook. Angela is brand-new here to Buckeye High School. I come to find out today through a very pleasant conversation that Angela grew up from, she grew up in a great hometown of just outside of Youngstown where I came from. And she was there in Austintown and Campfield for a little while, and then after that she moved to Indianapolis, and then not long after that moved to New Mexico. And so through our conversation today, I said, "How are you enjoying winter now?" She said her car wasn't doing so well. So it was, again, a great conversation. Angela is already a member of the National Honor Society where she has a 4.4 GPA here at Buckeye. She also volunteers at the Medina County SPCA. She wants to go to college. She's applied already at Mercyhurst, Xavier, and Walsh Jesuit, and is hoping to get soon the announcement that she'll be accepted to one of those three places. Again, today with me Angela. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to those students. Knowing that we have perhaps homework to do, and especially because of missing a day or two, we'd like to take this opportunity to take about a thirty-second break. So for those that need to excuse themselves, please feel free to do so and exit to your left, and we'll take about a thirty-second break and resume in a minute.
Okay, we'll get the meeting started again. Treasurer's Financial Report?
I would like to move the financial forecast presentation to the February Board Meeting. We had some snow days that we had and some changing of the guard in the Treasurer's Office. We had a tough couple of weeks. So I will add the four-year September.
Sounds good.
The other is, resolved that the Buckeye Board of Education accept the Treasurer's Report, including all internal budgets, amended certificates, and appropriations to the county auditor as our file in the Treasurer's Office. The is a payment approval, resolved that the Buckeye Board of Education approved payment to the enterprise company in the amount of $4,402.80.
Entertained a motion? To accept the financial report?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Manson? Sisalich?
The payment approval, the amount was incurred for $3,000. This was for...
Scripts.
Scripts for the play from last year, and it came in over the amount that was incurred, which is why I asked you to approve the pay. As far as the financials, with half of the year complete, we are, and I hate to say this, pretty close to on target for our general fund and our emergency funds. Our variances for the half-year through, our revenue is under, I overestimated it by $17,000. Our expenditures, our, I overbudgeted the expenditures by $142,000. And again, January in the original budget was a three-pay month. It is a two-pay month, and that is good. Last year, at the exact same time, halfway through, our revenue, we have a half a million dollars more in revenue this year than we had last year at that at the same time. This is because, past eleven, we've got another, you know, we got half a year, and the state did increase what they'd given to us in the biennial budget, which is, this is the second year of that. Our expenditures are up $359,000 compared to last year at the exact same time. Food service, with half the year through, is showing a deficit of $43,000. But there is federal money that will be asked for in December and November, which will be about $40,000. So food service is doing much better than it was at this time last year. The other one that I wanted to bring up was athletics. Those are the two that we transferred the majority of all the money to at the end of the year. At the end of December, is showing an $11,000 deficit, and that's after paying all of the fall coaching stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Manson?
Yes.
Sisalich?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Ptech?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes. Financial Advisory Committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Barco. Last night the Financial Advisory Committee met. We reviewed handouts from the treasurer. She went over some spreadsheets regarding athletics, income, and expenses. It answered a lot of questions, but also gave us more questions too. So we'll continue to look at some of the issues there. And also, the Financial Advisory Committee would like to take a look at assets and best practice of how to disperse assets that have value. We're going to have some stuff coming up. The superintendent's going to talk about it. His information items, just getting rid of old jerseys and items like that that have a formal program for that. So I want to get the members of the Financial Advisory Committee to give us some recommendations.
Sounds like a good thing. Any objections to the Financial Committee looking at those asset items that we have that are no longer needed and how to dispose of them in the best way? Nope? Okay. Anything else? All right, that leads us into public participation. The public is invited to speak to any of the agenda items and other school topics at this time. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Direct questions will not be answered by the Board of Education members at this time. However, answers will be given at a later date as appropriate. Public participation, who wants to go first? Nobody tonight? Okay, we'll go on. Superintendent's informational items.
Thank you very much. My first item tonight, as some of you may or may not know, January is Board of Education Recognition Month. I'd just like to take a few minutes to thank and recognize the members of our Board of Education. Certainly as superintendent, I have many dealings with our Board of Education and very fortunate to have such a wonderful Board of Education. I'd also like to, without taking too much time, to thank these board members on behalf of our community. Many of you probably know, like many jobs in which you are elected, oftentimes the job becomes a thankless job, and oftentimes that job is one that the more positive aspects of the job, you get to enjoy when you're at events and things of that nature, but when it's directly receiving phone calls often those are, because people aren't happy with something that's happening in our school district, and I know that often those can be unpleasant. But we are, again, very fortunate to have a Board of Education that cares about this community, that cares about kids, and that makes decisions that are in the best interest of kids. I know that when we have conversations about various issues, whether they become financial, whether they become regarding transportation, academics, the members of this board always consider and do what's best for children. And I can tell you that I am honored and humbled to be able to work with this board, and am very proud to recognize them today in front of you, and hopefully in front of those that get to watch this broadcast from home at a later time. But our community should feel very fortunate. They have made very good decisions as far as electing this Board of Education. And personally, I can say that I hope that this board sticks around for a long time. So remember that as your terms come due again. But at this time, I'd like to take a moment to thank and recognize each member, and if you would please join me. First, I'd like to thank and recognize Mr. Tom Ptech. Please help me to recognize and thank Mr. John Stoll. Next, Mr. Ken Barco. Ms. Ken Sisalich. And Mr. Dennis Manson. Thank you very much. The next item tonight that I would like to provide some information and recognize, we are very fortunate that from time to time, more often than we want to talk about, we have people that go above and beyond the normal duties of their position. This evening, I'd like to thank and recognize Ms. Emily Goodwin, who is one of those that constantly goes above and beyond the duties to provide opportunities for her kids that go beyond the classroom. One of these such projects that Ms. Goodwin has taken on is that video production at our junior high. And then in just a moment, I'm going to ask her to say a few words about it and also to recognize a few students that she has with her today. But if we could just take a minute, we may not watch this whole clip, but just to give you a sample, an example of the kind of videos that our kids are doing.
We're back. Did you miss us?
Don't be silly, Jacob. Of course they missed us. We have some fun segments on today's show. I hope you enjoy them.
So right now, let's go to Alex, who's learning more about basketball.
Hey, I'm here with Brock and Rocco, seventh and eighth grade basketball team. And Brock, how do you get pumped up before a game?
Well, we're going to get in this big circle, and you start screaming, like, I scream, we're chanting, "Let's go Bucks, let's go Bucks."
Both teams seem to be winning a lot of games. How do you guys deal with the loss?
Oh, well, I just get really mad, and then, like, we think of new ways that we can come up better next time.
Um, the next day after practice, we work on the mistakes that we had. Brock, what do you think your team needs to do to improve? Um, working as a team, building the bar, and whatever. What about you, Brock?
Um, better passes and smarter shots.
Back to you, Doc.
Thanks, Alex. Now it's time to push the rock meet with our dear future, Mr. Brock.
Hello. A question for me is, you seem to be an avid shoe collector. Which ones are your favorite ones? I think my favorite ones are my fluorescent yellow, my green flywires. I only wear them once in a while. Out of all of all the positions you've had in your education career, which has been your favorite, why? Actually, my favorite position so far has been here with you guys. I really like being part of Buckeye Junior High. I truly enjoy being in the gym. Helping and for being in the gym with everybody and helping them become better athletes. Everybody, not just the guys that think of their athletes. A lot of them think of their athletes. What is your all-time favorite movie? I picked the longest yard. It is, I don't know. It's a football movie, but with all enthusiasm. And tell us about your kids. I have two kids, Andrew and Mary. Andrew is eighteen, he is a freshman at Mount Union. He plays soccer, and he's an undecided major. And my daughter is sixteen, it's Mary. She plays basketball and soccer. Goes to school at Mordenia High School on the east side of Cleveland. That's about thirty-five, forty minutes from here. That's the typical question I would ask. You have a question? Here you go. All right. You're good?
All right. I don't know what to do.
What's wrong?
Hold this girl, but she doesn't know I exist.
Well, have you drank coffee, dear?
Well, you know how shy I am.
Well, you should write your mom a raise, though. She knows what to do. No, I told you, only one cup of fruit. Hold on a second, I gotta go. Hi, Rachel here. Here's our first letter. Dear Rachel, one of those this girl, I like her a lot, but she doesn't know I exist. I'm too shy to say anything. What do I do? Sincerely, Jacob Durkey. Dear Jacob Durkey, I know you're shy, but it's time to pop on your shelf. I would say you can stand on the table and confess your love for her.
Are you sure you don't mean one? I wouldn't dare. They wouldn't script.
So did we, so we stopped at the right point? Well, again, we wanted to just give you kind of an introduction to that, Ms. Goodwin. And would you mind, maybe you could come up so you could be on the camera and bring your students with you? And tell us a little bit about how this came about.
Sure. This is Jacob Durkey, who was in there in the video quite a bit. He has been one of our co-hosts, and this is Kaylee Flood. She's been one of our producers. So she's been a lot behind the cameras, so you didn't see her much. But she is going to be a co-host on upcoming episodes. The idea actually came from our principal, Mr. Smith, and our guidance counselor. They came to me last year with the idea, asked if I'd be interested. I said, "Sure." And just kind of worked with Mrs. Green on coming up with ideas of how this could work, getting the equipment. So right now, we just do it out of first period. You know, I just looked at the list and picked out kids that I thought would be good for this. And so we've had some turnover with eligibility or changing schedules, but hopefully next year we'll be, you know, could make it more of a study thing where the kids who want to do it have the opportunity to do it as more of an elective. And, you know, we just, every episode, we're trying to add more different things and collaborate, and they helped the writing process. They write the scripts with me, and we come up with the scenes together and have props and how we're going to do it. And I do most of the editing, but hopefully next year they can get in on that process too.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you so much, and thank you guys. Do you guys have anything that you'd like to say or comment about this?
I wouldn't mind doing any of the editing.
It's hard when I'm only pulling them out of study hall, and sometimes they got work to do, and, you know, so I gotta just kind of use them as they're available. But maybe next year it'll work out better.
Well, it's been very fun watching my TV. How many do you have out there?
Um, we have six. I think we're in the middle of our seventh one, and we have quite a bit of new faces coming up.
I know. You have one of the stars out here.
Yep, because it's on our first episode. So, yeah, none of the teachers are safe from being on the "What You Know About Me," or, they never know when they're going to get pulled in, so.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Yeah, the next item that I wanted to talk, this is really just more of a reminder. Buckeye Day, our fourth annual Buckeye Day, will be held on March seventh, and that's two thousand and fifteen. That's ten to two. And what I'd like to announce is that anybody from our community that would like to participate in any way, coming to view the productions, we have lots of music, and we have our band and our choirs and the drama that will be participating and performing. We'll have an art show. We'll have lots of our community organizations that come set up tables and would invite anybody from our community that would like to set up a table that day and come be a part of that. We do it right here in the elementary building. And we would certainly appreciate anybody coming to that day. If you are interested, you can contact me or contact Ms. Meyer and let us know that you're interested, so we'll make sure you have a table. Also, just an announcement, Family First Night, March nineteenth. This is another, again, our fourth annual. It's an opportunity for us to cancel all activities for one night. We know that in our crazy, busy, hectic lives, we often don't have enough time just to take a moment to celebrate the family and spend time together as a family. And we hope that as a school district, at least for one night, we can encourage that by canceling our activities, not giving any homework or tests the next day, and hopefully providing an opportunity for families to spend the evening together. We're very fortunate and thankful that many of our youth organizations join us that night and cancel their practices as well. And again, hopefully our families can enjoy that evening. And then my last informational item is I just want to send a big thank you out to our bus drivers. Obviously, as winter weather has come upon us, and we've had a few very not-nice mornings and afternoons, that our bus drivers do a lot to keep our kids safe and traverse the dangerous roads sometimes as we get to snow. I also want to thank our custodians of maintenance and transportation folks that also contribute to keeping our kids safe and keeping our buildings open and available for kids. So I want to thank them, and thank our community for your patience. I know that when we have changes to our schedule due to weather, that's a challenge for our families, and I want to thank you for your patience. Obviously, as you know, those are extremely difficult decisions, and I know they affect our families and affect your homes. So thank you for your patience as we deal with those changes occasionally in our schedule, and I hope we're done. No more snow days.
Let's hope so. I would like to thank you for all the, the tough decisions that you have to make as far as whether or not to close school. I know it's not an easy decision, and I know it's start, it's one that starts very, very early in the morning. But I'd like to thank you for all you do. I know that our real goal is to continue the educational process, and sometimes we do have interruptions from weather. But I'd like to thank you for the way you handle that. On to your superintendent's recommendation.
Yes, my first item is a recommendation to you that we, the Buckeye Board of Education, approve an agreement with the Medina County Educational Service Center to pay $795 for speech and deaf education services for extended school year services, and these are students on IEPs whose educational plan would indicate they need to continue with services throughout the summer.
All right, they have a motion for that?
Motion.
Mr. Ptech?
Sorry.
Mr. Manson? Any other discussion on it? Roll call please.
Ptech?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Sisalich?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes. New business.
Yeah, again, I bring to you many policies for the folks watching. You can tell that we have a lot of things happening in Columbus and in our legislature. Every one of these policies would indicate a change in the law, and thus I bring these to you today. This would be the second time, actually probably the third time, given our organizational meeting, that I'm bringing these to you. But I would also... meeting, that I'm bringing these to you, but I would also indicate that if, it would be helpful, because there is a lot here, and probably I've asked them to read probably 500 pages of changes to policies, that if we wanted to put this off again until February in order to give ample time to review these policies, I think that would be fine.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to table this until February.
Some.
Mr. Pitek?
Yes.
Ciccelic? And any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Pitek?
Yes.
Ciccelic?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Personnel?
Yes, thank you. Under certified personnel, my first item is a request for a maternity leave. Congratulations to Ms. Amanda Hoag, who is our, one of our high school guidance counselors. She has requested approximately six weeks off, starting approximately March 2nd, for the birth of her child. Next in those same lines, Ms. Lauren Rogers, congratulations to her, who is also expecting. She has requested five weeks off, starting at approximately April 25th. My next item under classified is a employment. I would ask that you consider hiring Jody Keith and Elizabeth Seach as after-school tutors at Buckeye Junior High at $25 an hour. This will be one hour a day, two days a week, and really excited about this, I want to thank Mr. Smith and his staff. We are trying this opportunity through our federal Title I grant in order to provide a little more support to our students that may need it at the junior high, providing an opportunity for them to stay after school and work with our certified teachers in areas that they may have troubles, or maybe they're struggling a little bit, or maybe just need a little extra help on some homework. We're going to focus on math and reading, as the Title I grant would indicate that we do. We also have Celia Simak, Emily Goodwin, Michelle Shelley and Laura Roble, excuse me, who will substitute with your permission in the event that Ms. Seach or Ms. Keith can't be there. Classified, I bring you my first item is a resignation of Jessie Speck as a junior high secretary. She has accepted a position as superintendent secretary at the board office. Also, next item, a resignation of Tanya Meyer, also has resigned from her position as superintendent secretary to assume a position in the treasurer's office as treasurer's assistant. Also ask you to accept the resignation of Yvonne Inman, she was the support services secretary, effective January 5th, and she will assume the position as high school secretary. All of these resignations are due to them accepting other positions within our school district. So, my next item, number four, would be asking you to accept Ms. Tanya Meyer as treasurer's assistant payroll clerk, effective January 5th, 260 days per year, and she will be paid an exempt salary rate of $39,600. Number five would be Ms. Yvonne Inman, to employ her as high school secretary, effective January 5th. She will work eight hours a day, five days a week, 207 days per year, and will be paid at step one of the building secretary schedule per the negotiated agreement. Also, I have a classified substitute there as secretary, Maria Colapitra, for the 14-15 school year. And then I have a number of supplemental contracts there. I won't read every one of those, but I will highlight one and thank our Athletic Booster Club. The last item there before resident educators, Mr. Jesse Dooling, was a football coach this year for us. He volunteered for us, but as a result of a donation from the Athletic Booster Club, they would like that money to be paid to Mr. Dooling for his services as an assistant football coach. The law does allow for this, there is a process that has to happen, which we have followed. Basically, in essence, that the Booster Club would make a donation and give that money to the school district. We then take out all applicable dues and that, and then give that money to that individual. So, want to thank the Athletic Booster Clubs for that donation in order to pay Mr. Dooling. Resident educators, again, just for clarification, resident educators are those folks that act as mentors for first, second, third or fourth year teachers, and those are listed there as to what year. The reason we're bringing this to you because we did recently approve a new contract with our teaching staff, which did indicate a new pay rate for these folks, and so we are bringing that to you today to approve those new rate of pays for those individuals.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations?
Some.
Mr. Stahl? Your second?
Tuck.
Mr. Pitek? Any comments?
I'm assuming, as the same was last season, if we don't have enough kids go out, for example, junior high track coach, we won't have two assistant coaches.
That's correct.
Mr. Manson, you had a question?
Superintendent, 15, update to the A3 tutors, how will we get the kids who need that to the table?
You know, the next thing at the junior high, we now have the teams that we have there, and so they're very intimately involved with their students and they know them very well, so that will really be an invitation from the teachers through their teams and inviting the kids and inviting their parents to let them know that this opportunity is available. We certainly know that sometimes if you tell a student that we'd like them to stay after school and work on math, that they may not be there, but we're also hoping that their parents will work with us to encourage them to, to stay for that opportunity after school. We also, again, that in conversation with Mr. Smith, we have a number of our students that stay after school anyway, but they go to the library, so we're trying to provide an opportunity to get some academic help for them instead of going to the library to stay at school and get a little extra help with their teachers.
So, this is open to any student?
One item that I have, Jesse Dooling is in here with 1,721.25. That is not what the contract's for, that's after the, everything's deducted.
The Booster Club gave a donation of $2,000.
Right. I just wanted to make that a point, that that's not what the contract is actually for.
Yes.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Stahl?
Yes.
Pitek?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Ciccelic?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to donations.
Yeah, I have one donation this evening, and we want to thank Mark Binzoni, otherwise known as Coach Binzoni, our football coach. I have not talked to him about this yet, but I assume he must have had a drum set at his house that maybe one of his kids played at one point, that don't any longer, and he was kind enough to donate that to our music department. The value to that drum set is $400, so thank you to Coach Binzoni for that donation.
Motion to accept the donation?
Motion.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Manson? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Stahl?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Ciccelic?
Yes.
Pitek?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Board comments? Mr. Manson?
Not sure.
Ms. Ciccelic?
Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. I wanted to thank the scouts for coming out, even though we don't know their scouts because they have their jacket on. They had to come for communication and assist ship in the community, so it's, and we expect you guys every single Tuesday from now on.
Yeah, I was going to say, not every Tuesday.
First Tuesday in a month. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Stahl? Mr. Pitek?
Great job, junior hires. That's good stuff. It was entertaining, so, good job.
Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of compensation and D, preparing for conducting reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Any other reasons? Eric, any motion?
Motion.
Mr. Pitek? Ciccelic? I keep messing up my name, I'm sorry. I'll be as close. I try, I'm trying. Roll call, please.
Pitek?
Yes.
Ciccelic?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming.